Evening, everyone, and welcome to our City Council meeting of November 3, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Vice Mayor Haddishel.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Here.
Councilmember Mandonsa.
Here.
Mayor Bernascony.
Here, thank you. I'd like to ask our Vice Mayor Bruce Haddishel if he would lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our clerk if she would please announce the procedures for addressing the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. If you have not already picked up an agenda, they are available at the end of the staff table. If you're here to speak to an issue not on the agenda, you may do so under public comment with a three-minute time limit. As a reminder, the Brown Act does not allow the City Council to take action on items that are not listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak to an item appearing on the agenda, you must stay within a five-minute time limit. Members in attendance may address the City Council at the podium. Speaker time limits will be monitored. When the light on the podium blinks red, you'll be asked to conclude your comments. And if you do address council tonight, we would appreciate your name for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one presentation this evening. Item 5.1, a proclamation for National Nurse Practitioner Week. Do we have someone in the audience that will accept that? Okay. We have our councilmember Pauline Rakuchi and former mayor. She is a nurse, and I've asked her to do the presentation this evening.
Hi, guys. I'm very honored to be able to have you here. I'm excited to be here and showing people that nurses can do literally everything. And this is one step of a higher level, and you can work in a hospital, out of a hospital, in another country, all over the place, and be a nurse. So I'm going to read this to you, and then maybe you'd like to say a few words. Whereas nurse practitioners serve as trusted frontline providers of health care for patients in California, and whereas nurse practitioners are advanced practice registered nurses who have advanced clinical education and training, building upon their initial registered nurse preparation, whereas there are 270,000 licensed nurse practitioners in the United States and over 30,000 nurse practitioners in California, providing primary, acute, and specialty care to patients of all ages and all walks of life, and whereas nurse practitioners diagnose, treat, prescribe medications, and other treatments to patients through caring, patient-centered, and holistic model of care. Whereas our citizens of our state and nation have a great trust in the high quality of care that nurse practitioners provide, resulting in over 1 billion patients' visits annually to nurse practitioners across the country, whereas five decades of research demonstrate the high quality of care provided by nurse practitioners. And leading governmental and policy entities included the National Academy of Medicine, National Council of State Board of Nursing, National Governors Association. Federal Trade Commissions have taken notice of the benefits of nurse practitioners and have endorsed such a regulatory model. Whereas Roseville is proud to recognize and honor the service of a nurse practitioner in our state, and therefore, as our mayor, Krista Bernascony, and our council, in recognition of the countless contributions that nurse practitioners have made over the past century and continue to make health and well-being of citizens a primary goal. And this is Nurse Practitioners Week, November 7 through 13. And I work with many in a hospital, and they're great people.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much, Pauline, and Mayor Bernascony, and members of the council. I am so honored. I'm Patty Gurney, and not only am I a proud citizen of Roseville, and I work in here in Roseville in the Sutter West Pediatrics Practice. I am president of California Association for Nurse Practitioners, and I'm so thrilled to accept this proclamation. I asked several of my colleagues, CAMP members also, to be here tonight, and I'm going to have you stand. Susan Cafrey works in pediatric neurology, and she brought her dog, who is also very much a part of therapy that is given to children. Lars Geyerdi is one of the officers for our local CAMP Sacramento chapter. Lars is a PhD-prepared musician and a nurse practitioner who works in the acute care setting, has authored many articles, very distinguished, and provides care in the hospital at UCD, right? UC Davis Downtown. And then Gordon Worley is a past president also, and Lars also lives here in Roseville. Gordon Worley is a past president for CAMP and is here to help accept this, and he's a professor at UC Davis for nurse practitioners, and also works in home health, I believe.
In Grass Valley.
In Grass Valley. Yes. So, thank you so much. We appreciate this recognition and your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Patty, would you like to get a picture before you leave? I know you're head of your association and council. Would you mind taking this quick picture with her? You brought -- we're in great company with your team here this evening, so we're happy to be able to do this. All right, we'll take a quick photo and...
Ryan.
Coming in?
Yeah, everybody.
Thank you.
So, Lars, you do music therapy?
I do critical care, but I do music on the side. A professional musician in the past.
Music therapy is helpful.
Yeah, it is.
I got you all in right there. Smile at the camera. One, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all. Okay, we will move into public comment. Now is the time for anyone to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here tonight that would like to address the council? You can come forward. We have a -- the speaker cards are somewhere. Oh, end of the staff table if you want to fill one out, but you can just come forward and state your name, please.
Can I fill a card out first?
Just go ahead, and then you did after.
Hi, my name's Nicole Young. I'm a resident of Roseville, and I'm also the chapter chair for Moms for Liberty of Placer County. These are not my words, these are one of my members' words, and she cannot make it tonight. Her name is Jennifer Santry. She's also a resident of Roseville. On Thursday, October 28, Citrus Heights City Council passed a resolution expressing support for citizens' individual rights and choice as it relates to the COVID-19 vaccine. I am here today to request that the Roseville City Council create and pass a similar resolution for our city. Considering we are Americans, it is a shame that we are even having this discussion. We shouldn't have to make a statement in support of having the freedom to make a choice regarding personal health decisions. But the fact is mandates are being created that are removing our options to do just that. Roseville Joint Union High School District adopted Resolution 2116 on August 26 of this year. The resolution states that the Roseville Joint Union High School District shall not adopt mandatory vaccinations for students or staff members against SARS-CoV-2 coronavirus. Will the city stand with its high school district and create a similar resolution expressing citizens should have the right to choose? If these overreaching mandates continue to be implemented, Roseville will lose businesses and residents. The schools will lose staff and students. We can already see these situations happening in cities around us like San Francisco and LA. The only way to stop the tyrannical mandates coming from our state government is to come together with like-minded cities and organizations and fight for our freedom. Please consider standing up next to Citrus Heights and make it known that Roseville is for choice. And I have Citrus Heights Resolution. If you guys would like to see it, can I give it to the clerk?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if you just want to -- do you need a card for her?
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, please.
That's okay.
She says no. Okay. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
Hi. Evening. My name is Tina. I also live here in Roseville. I am a member of the Placer County Freedom Coalition with a roster of roughly 160 people. I wanted to second the resolution that Nicole is talking about. If Citrus Heights can pass a proclamation making citizen choice for the vaccine, I think that we should be able to do that here in Roseville as well. I'm watching too many nurses being walked off the job. We just recognized Nurse Practitioner Week. We should have the ability to have our own choice in this matter. Medicine has never been one-size-fits-all. That we would think that it should be magically okay for us now is ridiculous. So I'm asking you to please pass the resolution making citizen choice for the vaccine here in Roseville. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else tonight that would like to address the council? Okay, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to our consent calendar.
He had one.
Oh.
Hi, guys. My name is Robert Elster, and I am the Placer Veterans Stand Down Ambassador. And we're meeting for 2022, and I have brochures for each council member here, and my business cards for each council member. And if there's extras, we can leave them off to the side for anybody else who is so interested. Originally, we started out as being a homeless volunteer situation where we can get homeless veterans off the street and into housing and other goods and services, specifically medical, dental, and eye clinic-type of environments. Pauline has been to several of our stand downs, and I appreciate her immensely. And we also provide for pet services. We also do clothing services for the veterans that we have. And not only am I a resident of Roseville, I grew up in Roseville. Didn't graduate from Oakmont High, but Del Aro. But on top of that, I really love the fact that I'm a part of the VASH Housing Services, which I get through Roseville Housing Authority. And I'm so appreciative of being a Rosevillian, as well as the fact that we were the all-American city, I believe, in 1963, and it was just a wonderful environment. And you couldn't ask for a better place to live and grow up than in Roseville, California. And so I'm very, very appreciative of being a resident here. But our services are a part of health, human services. We provide EDD services as well, counseling, and housing referral, which is really our big focus in making sure that our homeless vets aren't homeless, they are actually in housing that will provide them stability in order to get back into their mental status, which should be pretty much normal at that point. And for myself, I'm a type 2 diabetic, and my A1C is now 6.6. So I've never been so happy in my whole entire life than that. And so I leave you with the brochures and my business cards. You get parting gifts. And I've got to tell you, the event that took place at Roseville Cemetery on Saturday for the Gold Star families, that emotionally really took a lot out of me because my father served. He was a Rosevillian. 234 Donner Street was his location. He's also on the Mayadu Korean War Veterans. That's there. That served here from Roseville. But I've got to tell you, there was nothing so wonderful than being a part of that organization and seeing the Gold Star right in the middle of the cemetery. What a beautiful compliment that was to each and every one of you who represents us. And I represent you guys at the Placer Veteran Stand Down. So here's the information, all good and all ready for you to go. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight, guys.
Thank you for your comments, Robert.
City clerk could take him over there if you want.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, did I miss anybody else? Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to make a public comment before we move on? Okay. All right, we'll close public comment and move on to our consent calendar.
All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and will be passed by one motion. There will be no discussion of consent calendar items unless a member of the city council, staff, or the public requests a specific item be removed. Mayor, at this time, I have no request from staff or from council.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Let's see. Vice Mayor Haddishel.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakuchi.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandonsa.
Yes.
Mayor Bernascony.
Yes, thank you. Onto item 8.1, the Creekview Community Facilities District, number 1, Series 21.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and councilmembers. My name is Dennis Kaufman, Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. And with this item tonight, staff are recommending approval of a bond issued for the Creekview Community Facilities District, number 1. For background, the city forms CFDs to create a land-secured financing mechanism to fund construction of authorized facility or services. This Creekview CFD, number 1... This Creekview CFD, number 1, was formed back in November of 2019. The first series of bonds were issued in 2020 in the amount of $10,905,000. The Series 2021 bonds will be the second series of bonds that will be issued for this district with an authorized amount not to exceed $13,750,000. And the maximum authorized debt for this district is $81 million for improvement area number 1 and $137 million for the future annexation area. The authorized facilities in this CFD are listed on this slide. And the infrastructure that's listed can be financed with the bonds. And that includes transportation improvements, including Creekview Plaza Drive, Westbrook Boulevard, West Park Boulevard, Blue Oaks Boulevard, as well as utility infrastructure and park and open space improvements. This next slide shows the recorded map of the district. The boundary is the north of Blue Oaks Boulevard. And you can see Westbrook Boulevard intersects the district from the top coming down to the bottom. The initial boundary for the improvement area, number 1, is the dark, bolded area at the bottom left of the district, and the rest of the district is the future annexation area. So the staff recommendation tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for the Creekview CFD, number 1, and approving the related actions and documents, including the form of the preliminary official statement, which is the document that's used to market the bonds. This concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of Dennis?
No questions.
Dennis, okay. I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address this item? Okay, close public comment. And if the council doesn't have any other deliberations, can we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll read the motion.
That's to adopt Resolution Number 21-441, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Roseville, Creekview Community Facilities District, number 1, Public Facilities, Improvement Area, number 1, improving and directing the execution of a supplemental agreement to fiscal agent agreement and a bond purchase agreement, approving the form of preliminary official statement, approving sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor Haddishell?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes, thank you. Move on to a public hearing. We have item 9.1, Formation of Torrente at Sierra Vista Communities Facilities District, number 1. I'll open the public hearing and ask you to give us some information about it, Dennis.
All right, thank you. Good evening again. So with this public hearing, staff are recommending council approve the formation of the Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District, number 1, for public facilities. Back on September 15th, the city council approved a resolution of intent to form this CFD and set tonight as the public hearing date to form the CFD. Again, for background purposes, the city sets up CFDs to create land secured financing mechanisms to fund acquisition or construction of authorized facilities, which is largely infrastructure for new growth subdivisions, as well as services. This next slide has the map that is recorded with the county that shows the boundaries of the district. And this is located in the Sierra Vista Pacific Plan area, north of Baseline Road and west of Market Street. Overall, the Torrente project includes about 21 acres of developable property that includes 159 dwelling units, currently planned as 115 low-density residential units and 44 medium-density residential units. The authorized facilities that can be financed with this district are listed on this slide and include transportation improvements that include Baseline Road, Vista Grande Boulevard, Upland Drive, Sierra Village Drive, and Market Street, as well as utility and infrastructure and park and open space improvements. This CFD can also be used to finance authorized maintenance and operation for the facilities funded by the CFD that have a useful life of five years or more. And the CFD will also be used in the future to finance authorized services to maintain or replace the infrastructure and improvements for generations to come. So tonight, the staff recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, request the city clerk to read the ballot results, and to approve the resolutions and the ordinance. And I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of Dennis on this item?
No.
Okay, we will all open up to public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this item? Okay, I don't see anyone, so I'll close public comment. Can our clerk please read the ballot results?
For the special tax election for Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District, 1, the ballot results are number of yes votes, 30, number of no votes, 0. The ballot measure is adopted.
Okay, great, thank you. Does the council have any other comments? I will close the public hearing and ask our clerk to please read the motion.
The motion is to adopt Resolution Number 21-442 of the City Council of the City of Roseville to form a community facilities district and to authorize the levy of a special tax therein to finance public facilities and public services and enforce such community facilities district, and adopt Resolution Number 21-443 determining necessity to incur bonded indebtedness of the City Council of the City of Roseville for the City of Roseville Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District, number 1, Pacific Public Facilities, and adopt Resolution Number 21-444, calling a special election of the City Council of the City of Roseville regarding the City of Roseville Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District, number 1, Public Facilities, and adopt Resolution Number 21-445, declaring results of special election and directing recording of notice of special tax lien regarding City of Roseville Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District, number 1, Public Facilities, and introduce for first reading ordinance of the City Council of the City of Roseville levying special taxes within the City of Roseville Torrente at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District, number 1, Public Facilities. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor Haddishell?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Akuchi?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendonza?
Yes.
Mayor Bernasconi?
Yes.
Thank you. This is one of our shorter meetings, and I think that you've spoke the most, Helen. Okay, well, we always have one last public comment at the end of our meeting. So is there anyone tonight that would like to speak to any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, we'll close public comment and we'll start with any staff reports. Do our city attorney or our?
Nope.
Have any comments?
Go for the staff reports, Mayor.
Councilmember Akuchi, you want to kick us off?
Oh, okay.
Any comments?
Just a little bit about a couple of water meetings. I had, today was Northern California Water Association. Yesterday was our PCWA and City of Roseville Water Committee. And they were both, the one with PCWA, we got into mostly about what was happening in our area. And everybody saw we had that torrential rain and that was great. And it did help our reservoir up more, obviously, than it was. It was like up to 300,000 acre feet. But what that means is enough that you can still pump water from it for our city and other outlining jurisdictions. And also the fact that other things that we're doing, like our aqua recharge and working with our Placer County Water on different, our piping around the city so that we can connect in different places and collect our water, our mountain water. So it was very encouraging. Hopefully, we have more rain to come with NAWCA. We talked about what was going on in the region and what was happening. Most of those people are primarily agricultural farmers or they have animals. And even though it's a little bit different, water needs are water needs. And it's always interesting to see what's kind of going on. So those are my two meetings. Oh, and Scott might say some more. He was also, he's a joint council member at the PCWA Roseville meeting.
Thank you. Anything tonight, Councilmember Mendonza?
I have no updates tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Haddishell?
Yeah. I have a few updates. We'll switch from water to transportation. Earlier this week, I got to participate as the, I'm on the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and also on the Capitol Quarter's Joint Powers Authority with Supervisor Jim Holmes. Earlier this week, I testified in support of $30 million for the Third Track Project. The Third Track Project is in historic Old Town Roseville. It is in the California Transportation Commission's Interregional Transportation Plan. That will be approved later this year and funded into the future. That would increase the frequency of Capitol Quarter trips at our Roseville Station, eventually to, initially to three and then eventually to 10. But an important, an important project, especially given that junction crossing. When I tried to make a turn today on Lincoln Street, I noticed fences around the Junction Crossing project. So that's getting underway. And that's, I believe, 80 workforce housing units there in historic Old Town. And then, of course, right around the corner, within walking distance of where the Capitol Quarter train would pick up is the housing project, the Main Street Housing Project, that's been open now for, it seems like close to a year. Tomorrow's Regional Water Authority, you know. And then I want to join Councilwoman Rakuchi in thanking our professional staff for being so responsive. You know, it's a blessing and a curse. We got all this water and it stirred things up. And we had some organic matter come into the system. Ironically, we were all, I think we were all just recently out to celebrate our water treatment plant's 50th birthday. So we got, we had the relevance of seeing all of what happens there. But I want to thank, I saw Sean Bigley on television, very calming and very responsive to our community about the turbidity that got stirred up as a result of all that water coming into the reservoir at once. We need more and we'll get more. Last thing, and I appreciated the comment about the Gold Star. The last thing that, earlier this week on Monday evening, two of our own, former Roseville Mayor Carol Garcia, who's a Sierra College trustee, and Andrew Tagg, who's the president of the Roseville Joint Union High School District, were recognized by the Placer County Office of Education in their areas, high school and upper education, as trustees of the year. So two of our own, homegrown, were recognized for their excellence amongst their peers on Monday night. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert?
It's been kind of a busy couple of weeks. We had a Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations general board meeting. All the different neighborhood associations in Roseville get together every month. And it's a great communication process. And this year, they're, they usually host a Santa in the Park event out at a rec center where people come and they get free photos with Santa. And there's crafts and entertainment and train ride. Because of the pandemic still going on, they're changing up to something kind of creative. It's a drive-through Santa in the park where you can actually, it'll be at Mayadu and it's going to be on December 11. You go to arcona.org website and there'll be information on there. But you drive through and you can actually hop out and get photos with Santa. And it's in a safe environment. They'll, they'll give you crafts that you can take home with your family and snacks and goodies and stuff. So it's kind of a unique twist on Santa in the park. And at least they're having it this year because last year it got canceled. The PCWA meeting that Paulie and I went to, there's one thing I just want to mention. And we're aware of it, but the public, a lot of times, isn't aware of it. And that's the water that you see in Folsom isn't necessarily our water. Or, you know, when it's really low, that doesn't mean our water levels are low. A lot of our water is stored upstream, up the American River, in reservoirs higher up. And so that's just something interesting. Hopefully, some people are now aware of that, that we do have a lot of water storage that's outside of Folsom. And there's so much new, so many new projects happening to further strengthen our water supply. We inject it underground and store it there, treated water, and we can pull it up and mix it in. We're putting new pipes in to move water around different ways. So I'm just so impressed. Roseville always seems to be ahead of the curve and our community is doing so much better than some that are struggling with this. And of course, that storm was awesome. The Gold Star Memorial, all of us were there and it was, it was very moving. And I would encourage you, if you haven't, go out to the Roseville Cemetery near the Roseville High School on Berry Street and go back in there where the new building is. It's a great memorial. It's really pretty. It's a, it's a nice honor for those families who've lost somebody, military veteran. Last week was cap to cap. And usually every year, several council members team up with the SAC Metro Chamber and there's hundreds of people that go. And we go back to DC and we lobby on a bunch of different areas, water and public safety and economic development and land. And we go meet with senators and congressmen and their staff and different national departments for the benefit of our community. And this year, it was virtual. And so I sat through tons of Zoom meetings with people in DC and staff members. And I was on the economic development and we focused on broadband. And a lot of our ask was to try to get funding in our communities. You know, Roseville has areas of town, all the new areas are all fiber and greatly connected. But we have some older areas that don't have that. And some of the families in there struggle because they can't afford the broadband and they can't even afford the devices to connect. And so we're trying to get funding to try to help these families be able to get on the internet and keep up and be able to afford or be granted devices. And so it was a big ask and there's a lot of dollars out there that we weren't aware of. And so Valley Vision's working on it and it was a pretty interesting process. And I know there's many other groups that were lobbying for different things as well, a lot of infrastructure and things. I attended Family Fun Night on, a few days before Halloween here on Vernon Street. The Downtown Roseville Merchants and the Downtown Roseville Partnership put on a fantastic drive-through Candy Fest. I was with the Arcona table towards the end. And so all these kids were coming through with bags just crammed with candy. So I'm sure the dentists loved that process. But it was a really cool event and some of the cars were decorated. And I walked down and got some pictures, but a lot of fun participation by the merchants. And I thought that was a really neat, free event for the community. The Economic Development Advisory Committee for Roseville met recently. And we have several different industries that sit on that board. And we talk about the economics of the city and we get updates on different things that are happening. We have some pretty cool things coming regarding incubators and business startups. And so we've got some announcements coming up that the city will be making that we're really excited about. And I think this is a neat idea to help start businesses in Roseville and hope a few of them hit it big for us. And then the other thing I'd mention is we have a lot of really cool holiday events coming up for the community. And so the city has a calendar of the tree lighting, which is a fantastic event. There's a holiday parade, a lot of neat family-type events. So I hope you check out the calendar and come out and enjoy what your city has provided for, just to bring the community together. Sorry to take so long. There's a lot of stuff going on.
Thank you for that. I'll just close with three things I wanted to provide an update on. The first one is the Vice Mayor and I have been participating on the Homeless Task Force comprised of elected officials throughout the county, working together collaboratively to share ideas related to the enforcement of camping, resources for our homeless population, social services. We will continue to meet through the end of the year. And I have found that to be helpful, to be sharing ideas with others in our South Placer areas. I want to thank Vice Mayor Haddishell for running the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I was on a federal advocacy conference in Washington DC with about 60 other people from our region. We focused on, there was discussions around forest management, our water, economic opportunities. We were able to meet with our congressional representatives, which was helpful. Kind of a mini cap to cap without 200 other folks, but it was a good use of my time, for sure. I'm thankful to be able to go and thank you all for covering me while I was gone. And then we, my colleagues did talk about the Gold Star Memorial, which I agree with Councilmember Albert. If you haven't had a chance to go out and see that at the Roseville Cemetery, it's really moving. And there will be four more Veterans Day events that I'll be attending to this Saturday and then to the following Veterans Day. One of those is at William. One of those is at William Jessup. So they're all public events, and everyone's invited. And we are a county, a city that does honor our veterans. So with that, I would like, unless anyone else has anything else, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you all back here on November 17th, 6:00 p.m. for our next council meeting. Thank you, everyone.